Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Uh, Dr. Mariano is not here tonight, so I will be helping lead the meeting. But not, I have to do it. So, um, let's do this. And can we do the pledge away in this place?
In this land, in this land, it's changed America into a republic from which it stands one nation.
Kelly, can you take my call, please? Mr. Broski?
Here.
Mr. Cora?
Present.
Mrs. Rory?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Present.
Mr. Montani?
I am here.
Mrs. Sexton?
Here.
Mrs. Traynor?
Present.
Ms. Heen?
Here.
And Dr. Mariano.
Present.
Okay, we'll have to announcements and recognitions.
Yes, under announcements, we have two this evening. First, uh, is just an announcement about Board Docs. So Board Docs will be, uh, begin to be implemented on September twenty-third. That'll be the next board meeting. It will be the platform for managing attendance, sharing documents, and accessing meeting information. This will be publicly available on the website. Uh, this transition will enhance transparency by providing the public with easy access to meeting minutes, policies, and other important information. This was all we made in the spring to move from our current system to Board Docs. We just decided now that we're members of training, we're gonna move to it next, uh, in two weeks, two Tuesdays. Next, uh, tonight, we have a presentation on Nutrition Inc., who has to make a presentation this evening. So we'd like to invite them forward.
I understand we're gonna use a screen and projector for the presentation.
Oh, okay. Want us to come down?
Yeah, sir.
This is the board you're providing.
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Yep, if he's not on.
I can, no worries.
Well, it should be on, it should be on, but...
That's okay, I'll get started. Um, so TNG proudly celebrates fifty years of dedicated service to our customers this year. So very excited to celebrate that this past year. Thank you. So this past summer, we celebrated our summer seminar with our directors. This year's theme was Eva Spark. So we had a globally, globally recognized speaker and author help energize our directors with this message and encourage clarity in cultural shaping. This summer as well, too, we held our annual professional development day, where we welcome our hourly staff to attend, um, an opening meeting in professional development day, where they get to earn continuing credits of education that's set by the USDA. Um, so some of those topics included civil rights, law versus serve, pass up and safety procedures, um, to get them ready for the beginning of this whole year. Looking at our year in review, um, breakfast and lunch budget, we felt a little bit short coming into the end of last year, uh, but our Ella Cart exceeded well over budget, which really helped, um, come in with our bottom line to aid in that cafeteria fund. Um, so just some pictures from last year to kind of recap our year. Um, highlighting one of our fan favorite pizzas that we serve every day at our secondary level. Our staff grades the pizza and does a really great job, um, focusing in on the details for our students, which they love. We got to honor our middle school staff down at the bottom left there, um, with our Moments Matter program. Um, so that was an awesome initiation for them. In the middle there, we had a creative day event at our intermediate school last year, where we celebrated a day in the ballpark with the students. Um, they got to have some cool toppings and celebrate the Pirates home opener. Our director there in the middle partnered with our produce vendor and did a sampling in the fall of apples and apple cider. And then in the bottom right corner there, our intermediate students were able to hold, um, and have a nutrition education event, where they got to make their own trail mix. Uh, so it was a really fun, a little chaotic event, uh, but the students had a really great time. So what's new for this school year? Um, we are bringing back our Take Nutrition Global and Take Nutrition Expedition programs. So we get to bring, um, some different cultures and countries' food into our cafeterias. Uh, so at the elementary and secondary levels, we will partner, um, a country and have a food item that day that goes with that theme. We'll have a table set up for the students that they'll get to kind of engage, learn about the ingredients, where they come from, um, and take some things home to kind of incorporate and do, um, at home with their family. Um, innovation is always at the top of our priority. Um, so this year, our chefs and dietitians, um, worked on some really fresh and creative recipes coming into this school year. So some things we've already got to try in our cafeterias, uh, this past two weeks has been gravigoli, tortellini, um, a chicken tikka masala sauce, which is extremely flavorful and really, really good, um, and some ramen bowl recipes that we're looking forward to incorporating. Sustainability, um, is always at the top of our priority as well, too. Um, so at our youth advisory council meetings this year, um, our elementary students will get to, um, participate in a Planet Pals program, where they get to take actionable steps, um, to commit to reducing waste. So they will sign a plate pledge poster, um, and kind of be school lunch heroes in that aspect to, to take a part in reducing waste and being eco-friendly in our cafeterias. Farm to Fork is one of our reimagined programs as well, too. So we partner with local vendors to source and feature locally grown foods. Teach our students how to, how food travels from the local farm to their fork and highlight foods and ingredients grown in your school's areas. So engagement and feedback is also extremely important to us. So during those youth advisory council meetings with your students, we get to engage, give feedback, then we get to implement to our menus. Uh, this year, during our meetings, we're introducing a food fight, um, initiative. No, that's not a real true food fight in the cafeterias, but it's kind of like a March Madness bracket, where the students get to pick their favorites and they'll narrow it down to competitors at the end. And then that last menu item, we get to feature a special day for the students that they picked and got to incorporate into their, um, menus for the month. And principals also have a voice, too, of course. Um, so we'll be sending out a principal engagement survey here soon, um, giving some feedback from our administrators, um, to incorporate and implement new things. Nutrition for Life, um, again, is one of my favorite programs. It aims to encourage our youngest students, which are kindergarten students, students to come into the cafeteria for three days in September and eat for free. Um, so it gets them kind of comfortable with the cafeteria and the program, um, at no cost to them. We have balloons, we do little giveaways with pencils and bookmarks, all just to make them feel comfortable for those three days. Uh, so Buy American provision, um, during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we're required to comply with federal Buy American guidelines. So we've implemented a tracking and reporting procedure to ensure compliance. Um, so items such as pineapples and bananas, for example, may be limited on the menu because they're not locally grown. Um, limitations on juice offerings, um, might decline due to, um, it not being produced in the U.S. to meet our demand and needs for those guidelines. Um, and some limitations on fresh fruit, or fresh produce items, I'm sorry, when they are not available in any U.S. due to the growing season. So all things that we will try to do our best to, to hide and not make known to anyone, um, while doing our part of, of making sure we meet those guidelines and standards. Again, uh, the picture I showed you of our middle school staff with that TNG Cares program, which is a corporate-wide initiative. Um, we honored our, our middle school staff this past school year, um, for their hard work and dedication to our students throughout the school year. And then lastly, our TNG Cares program, um, we're able to partner with student workers, um, and offer grants, um, to our students in our communities and schools. Um, so we're really excited to, to keep up with our TNG Cares initiative going into the school year. And that is all, thank you very much.
I have a, I have a couple of questions. I heard, I heard, actually, a couple of parents asking about sort of, uh, mostly about breakfast. Um, it just not seems to be like a ton of options, I guess, with like, like freshly made foods. Mostly like bars and stuff, can you, can you just brush that a little bit?
Sure. Um, so I would say maybe sixty to seventy percent of the things that we offer are breakfast bar grab and go options, um, just due to the limitations on time. Some buildings aren't eating in the cafeteria, so they're taking that and going to their classrooms. Um, and just due to the limitations of the morning with the time, being able to get off the bus or get dropped off and come and eat. We do offer hot items as well, through breakfast sandwiches, pancakes, waffles, um, as often as we can within the limitation of time, um, per day, sort of week. So we will continue to implement some more of that, feedback, Kelly.
Awesome.
That'd be great. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll move on to public comments on agenda items. And of course, at this time, we want to invite any residents or taxpayers who wishes to address the board. You wanna come up and talk about any items on the agenda? Please keep your comments to two or three minutes, give us your name and address. And Kelly, did anyone sign up?
No, we don't have any comments.
No. Thank you. All right, I would like to announce that we had an executive session prior to the public meeting to discuss personnel, legal, and safety. And on to the superintendent's report.
Uh, yes, on the superintendent's report, we have one announcement and then three items we'd like to report on. Or about the same items.
Thank you, Dr. Kasey. Now, um, we'll start first with our announcement. This Saturday, uh, September thirteenth is our Shorters Knowing Band Festival. Um, the CB Show Band, along with seven visiting bands, will be performing their halftime shows throughout the night. Cone of Ice, Texas Roadhouse, Philly Pretzel Factory Pizza Americana, and more will be offering food for purchases. Um, all of the monies collected go directly to support the show band members, who have been working so hard, um, on this performance. I know I look forward to it, as I attended my first band festival last year, and I look to attend this one at seven o'clock. And it, the forecast is looking exceptional, and it's gonna be a beautiful night to come out, so we hope to see everyone there. On five point one, we have map testing School AI. I just wanted to give a quick, um, summary of what's going on. We took our map test, um, our first week was a little chaotic, so we bumped that back a little bit. Um, we plan on closing our session tomorrow. Uh, Jason Gardner and I are gonna work on pulling reports for all the students in the schools next week, and we will be sending that home paper copy, um, next week, along with a letter describing how to read and evaluate those tests. And anything that you have a question on, our school administrators and myself will be available for, um, any assistance you may need. Um, School AI, the teachers are using School AI. As of when I pulled it, there's over one hundred and eighteen spaces created. Those are like different areas that the teachers are creating. Some of them are pre-established, like they have AP tutoring sessions, but we have a hundred and eighteen specialized spaces that our teachers have created to use with our students to help not only necessarily with lesson planning for the teachers, but also with tutoring and finding some gaps in their education, um, to repair. Um, open house states, or middle school happened last week. Um, our intermediate school is September eleventh, from six-thirty to seven-thirty. Primary school is September eighteenth, from six to seven-thirty. And high school is September twenty-fifth, um, from five to seven. So those, those events are always a good time to come out, meet the teachers. Not necessarily for a parent conference, but to at least give a lecture to child's teachers. Um, PSAT, we are gonna follow the same format that we have followed in the past, but we are giving that test on October fourteenth. Um, students who are taking the PSAT will come, um, on the bus at their regular time. All the other students will be followed, um, on a two-hour delay schedule. That's so we can use, um, our proctors to administer the test to our eleventh graders and select tenth graders. That information has one home to those students. Um, and that test is used to help, uh, determine national merit scholars, which is a pretty big deal for our students, and hopefully, we have a few of those again this year. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, on to the secretary's report.
I have nothing to report outside the items that we discussed this evening in executive session.
Okay. On to seven point one, the board meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes for August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five?
So moved.
So moved, um, Jeff, thank you. Thank you. So made by Jeff Cora and second by Mitch Putt. One handed, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. On to eight point one, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Wesley Family Services Agreement. May I have a motion to approve the Wesley School's site-based academic services agreement?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cora, second? All right. Second by Mr. Broski. Okay, yeah, 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 thank you. Right. There are any questions on this particular item? Okay. Motion passes.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear me at all?
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. All right, on to nine point one, athletics and activities. The No Place for Hate Summit. I was gonna have you read this before we made motion. Can I do that? Or I can do it?
So students will have the opportunity to attend the student summit in conjunction with the fifth annual Eradicate Hate Global Summit, the most comprehensive anti-hate conference in the world. Students will have the opportunity to collaborate with students on other schools, race, role, names, to eradicate hate, celebrate diversity in remote, even still be in our schools. One of the things I noticed when I came here is there are awards across the district for participation in these programs, which is something we want to continue.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the high school to attend the No Place for Hate Summit? Summit on September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, at David L. Lawrence Convention Center from nine AM to two PM?
Second to Jeff Soak.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. On to nine point two, the Student Council Carrying Team Summit approval.
So moved.
May I have a motion to approve the Student Council to attend the Carrying Team Summit on September twenty-fifth? We already did that, right? Okay.
Motion made.
Thank you. And we already did that, so... So, oh, yeah, Summit for Schools, that's for fundraising, okay. Motion made by Mr. Montani, second? Thank you. Second by Mr. Broski. Any discussions on this item?
That we're on nine-two, right?
Nine point two, yep.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Nine point three, Dance Troop Travel Request. May I have a motion to approve the Dance Troop to attend a regional competition in Commerce Charter Township, Miami, at Walt Lake Northern High School from November seventh to the eighth, twenty-twenty-five?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Cora, second by Dr.... Listen, Marianne, I'm just writing, hold on. Dr. Mariano, any discussion on this item?
Yeah. That's Michigan.
I'm sorry, what?
Commerce Charter Township, Michigan.
Michigan or Miami, I'm not sure. Maybe that is Michigan.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Corrected. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. On to ten point one, the Human Resources Report. May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report for September ninth, twenty-twenty-five?
So moved. Second.
So moved by Dr. Mariano, second by Mr. Cora. Any discussion on the item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. On to eleven point one, a Christmas tree donation. May I have a motion to approve the Christmas tree donation from Richard Watts?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Cora, second by Mr. Montani. Any discussion on this item? I do understand it's one tree, and it'll be between the elementary school or the, uh, intermediate, so I'm not sure which school it is on tree. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. On to eleven point two, the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five payments. May I have a motion to approve the August twenty-twenty-five payments from the twenty-twenty-five payments from the, uh, twenty-five budget, including the charter schools?
So moved.
Mr. Cora? All right. Seconded by Mr. Broski. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. On to eleven point three, the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six payments. May I have a motion to approve the August twenty-twenty-five payments from the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, including charter schools?
So moved.
Motion made by Dr. Mariano, and second by Mr. Montani. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. On to eleven point four, mats for the track at the stadium. May I have a motion to approve the purchase of protective mats for the track at the high school stadium from Pioneer Athletic, per the attached quote?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Cora, second by Mr. Broski. And any questions on this item?
Yeah, just, um, I noticed when I was at the game that there were coverings out there on the track, so this is different from those.
So what hap-... So what's happening is there's not enough coverings. And when I was at the game the other day, um, there were a lot of people walking on the track and cross the track, including, um, some of the players with cleats on the track. It's just not enough.
Okay.
So we need a few more, and that's...
Is that saying, "I want room to fill with mats"?
Yes.
Sort of passing mass.
I've got the exact same line.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, you got a big investment in here.
Yeah. All, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. On to eleven point five, Clerk of the Works Proposal. May I have a motion to approve the attached proposal to hire Frango Construction as a clerk of the works to plan and implement future construction projects, per attached?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Cora, second by... Aaron Rodgers, thank you. Uh, any discussion on this item? So this is going to be in place of a construction manager, what the clerk of the works is, um... It's a professional organization that provides, uh, many people to, um, make sure that the work that's bid and getting done is done, is cleaned up, everything according to spec. They do also provide like an engineer for, uh, making sure that all of the specs are correct and the drawings are correct. They make, uh, recommendations to the board for saving money. So this is a good, um, effort on our part, and thank you, Dr. Kasey, for that, um, suggestion.
And just so the public knows, there have been lengthy discussions with the board, uh, on the possibility of future projects. Obviously, we know we have, um, future housing moments that are breaking around soon, um, so we have an influx of residents. We also know that the primary school has thirteen given classes, thirteen first grade classes and twelve second grade section right now. And that will lead into increased classes here in the IAS that we don't really have room for. So we have to start making plans for three, four years ahead. And there are, are longstanding construction issues that have been reported in my desk or previous super pens that I've read. So they've been part of the conversation for years. Uh, the goal is now to hire a team that will lead that, um, plans for our public. And then, once we have the bond financing, we know where we are with projects, we will hold a public meeting to only discuss that. So, um, we have some work to do in the next couple of months, and then we will public with our, our plans and future timeline with that in mind.
Thank you, Dr. Kasey. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. On to eleven point six, agreement with associates and counseling and wellness. May I have a motion to approve the agreement with associates and counseling and wellness LLC, per attached?
So moved.
Uh, so moved. Made by Trainer, second by Mariano. Thank you, Mitch. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. On to eleven point seven, the CB Class of Seventy-Five Donation to the Life Skills. May I have a motion to approve the Shorters Knowing Class of Nineteen Seventy-Five Donation of eight hundred dollars to the Life Skills Classroom?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mr. Train, made by Mrs. Trainer, second by Mr. Montani. Any discussion on this item?
Thank you for thinking of those answers.
And they just make, they could pick the money for their next, uh, class.
They could, yeah. No, that's awesome. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. On to twelve point O, Policies. May I have a motion to approve the review of Policy Two Four Nine, Bullying and Cyberbullying, and Policy Three Four Nine, Anti-Bullying?
So moved.
These policies were intended for approval at the previous meeting, however, the motion was recorded incorrectly. And there are no changes to the policies, but this review is definitely required every three years. Made, made by Mr. Montani. May I have a second?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Borowski. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. On to twelve point two. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of Policy Nine O Seven for the school visitors?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Dr. Mariano, second by Mrs. Trainer. And any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
On to twelve point three, Review of the Policy for School Wellness. May I have a motion to approve the annual review of Policy Two Four Six for Wellness? This policy has been reviewed in accordance with state and federal guidelines, and no changes are recommended at this time.
So moved.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Montani, second by Mrs. Trainer. Any discussion on this item? Oh, by Mr. Rogers. Sorry, I can't read. Thank you. Any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. All right, so now we're on to public comment for non-agenda items. Kelly, did anyone sign up?
Yes. Uh, first is Alexis Soretti.
Good evening, Alexis Soretti, two seven six Sunrise Drive in Carnegie. Tonight I want to talk about something that isn't on our agenda, but it's certainly weighing on my mind, and I have a feeling on other people's minds, too. The latest HR report indicated yet another two bus drivers and an aide have left Shorters Valley. This makes a total of thirteen employees who have gone over the past nineteen months. And here's an example from just this week of how these continued losses have strained our school district. Cross-country athletes were pulled out of their classes hours earlier than necessary because the same bus driver, who was getting them to and from their meet, had to transport students home from school today. That means these kids are potentially missing one or two additional classes that they wouldn't have had to miss if the adults in the room were making decisions on their behalf. We have data. We're aware of neighboring school districts that have privatized busing and are now backtracking and reconsidering this approach. Contractors put in a little bit and then raise costs. Kids forty-five minutes to an hour late getting home from school and remote schooling due to the lack of transportation. We know the ending of this story, yet the administration and the majority board will not course correct, and it's becoming a trend. Chaos and confusion are the hallmarks of decision-making these days. Nurses and school counselors shuffled around and reassigned with no apparent strategy. Some buildings and classrooms, classrooms this year have no white paper. Our teachers are scrambling to obtain paper so kids can learn. Our tax money evidently can't meet the paper need, yet we're signing on with another contractor for more renovations in a financially strapped time. So missteps have happened, misjudgments have been made. The majority of the board has an opportunity to demonstrate to students that they are prioritized. There's still a chance to show kids, we value their safety and success above all. Provide teachers with supplies, keep busing in-house, and ensure staff is supported in their roles. You can decide tonight that being compassionate, mature, and fair is more important than a political win. Thank you.
Next is Pam Ludwig.
Pamela Ludwig, nineteen thirteen, Elmore Lane. I'm here to talk about busing as well. There have been statements made, both verbally and in written communications, that suggest the union has been distributing false and misleading information. I believe it's important to clarify that much of the information the union has shared is based on publicly available sources, including state data, Department of Education reports, and studies that were funded by this board. If these sources are considered credible enough to fund and reference, it's only fair to consider their findings with the same level as respect. As you may know, the union has been engaged in contract negotiations since January of two thousand twenty-four, and it has been working without a contract since June of two thousand twenty-four. During a meeting earlier this summer, the board requested specific docu- or, I'm sorry, the union requested specific documentation to help move the process forward. However, only a small portion of that information has been provided to the union. The limited response has made continued progress very difficult. It has also been said that the gain of having all these buses bought by an outsourced company would give the school three point four million dollars, a one-time payment. Hopefully, you can buy paper with that payment. I cannot comprehend how an outsourced company has agreed to keep every single driving employee at the same pay scale and be a cheaper option. It's important to take into account the long-term and associated costs to outsourcing, which ends up costing more. We currently have some outsourced runs in our district, and they cost significantly more than our in-house runs. We simply ask that the full financial picture be shared, so the public can better understand the long-term impact. What we're ultimately asking for is the clarity, transparency, and respect for the dedicated employees who serve our students and families every day. Many drivers are understandably feeling uncertain about their futures, and that certainly can be difficult to bear. Like the previous speaker said, you can't expect everyone to wait around just to get fired. It weighs on all of us every single day, and I don't think most of you up there get that. One thing that hasn't changed is the lack of transparency from this board and the egos of thinking you don't have to follow the rules or practices of an actual legal school board. It can be public what those bids were. It's not that it can't be. Everything that has been done has been nothing short of bullying and blatant disregard for your current CB employees and CB taxpayers. Thank you.
I just want to say something real quick. It's not papers come up twice. No teacher is denied paper in the Shorters Knowing School District. And if they make that request, they're building a principal tomorrow, that will absolutely be granted. So I don't want, I've echoed that twice now. That's just simply not true.
Next is Chad S. If you could state your last name, please.
Good evening. Chad saw six thirty Waldwood Street, thanks for your time. Uh, this is an issue that I raised with Rob Merrick last year via email. I didn't raise it, I didn't come to a board meeting and bring it up. But it is involving the busing, um, and it's much less serious than what these women have been talking about, but it's a very simple fix. There's two stops on Waldwood. They're at six thirty-five and six thirty-nine. They don't stop there. They stop at six thirty, which is where I work, which is where I run a warehouse, which is where I live. We operate heavy machinery. We have big trucks. We have four different businesses working out there, and the kids and a lot of the parents are often just standing there. The kids are always playing in our gravel dirt parking lot. And while it's out of the seams, there's a really simple solution. Literally thirty feet away is a green space that was designated by FEMA in the original borough. Uh, yes, in twenty nineteen it must have been. They've got grass, they've got trees, they put a bench in last summer. So instead of these kids hanging out, we're using equipment and tools and trucks, and people are trying to come and go at six thirty. They're, they're literally sitting on our patio furniture. And it's, I'm not kidding you, it's where those women are sitting. It's thirty feet away. So I would propose that somebody take a closer look at this, try to get that stop moved to the green space. Thanks for your time.
Can we take care of that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we're definitely going to look at this. Really, thanks.
Six thirty Waldwood.
No, I have it. Six thirty Waldwood.
Yeah.
I'll call first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Okay. Kelly, anybody else?
No more comments.
All right, thank you. Uh, I'd like to announce that our next board meeting is September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and they have a motion to adjourn. Uh, made by Mr. Mo- made by Dr. Mariano, second by Mr. Montani. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you.